I'd like to call to order the Cuyahoga County Council meeting of October 25, 2011. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Calling the roll, Mr. Brady.
President.
Mr. Germana.
Here.
Mr. Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. Schron.
Here.
Ms. Conwell.
Present.
Mr. Jones. Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Ms. Simon.
Here.
Mr. Greenspan.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
President.
Ms. Conley.
Here.
There's a quorum.
All right, we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For our moment of silence this evening, I'd like to call on Councilperson Dan Brady.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Tonight, I'd like for us to remember Tracy Anne Vukovic, the daughter of Bill and Mary Dennehan, who died of ALS on 11th of October.
Item five, public comment related to the agenda. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed in?
Yes, Madam Chair, several people have signed in to speak. The first speaker regarding item number 11 is Doris Durica.
All right, if each person would you call your name, would you come forward to the podium and speak into the microphone so that you can be recorded? And you have a limit of three minutes. And please state your name when you start.
Council President Conley and council members, thank you for the opportunity to address this council. I am Doris Durica, a former teacher, mother of an Eagle Scout, and a homeowner in Cleveland. When we, the citizens of Cuyahoga County, voted to replace our three county commissioners, we were very happy to read in the Plain Dealer that the newly-elected council members would adopt a code of ethics. However, four of the members of the Ethics Committee are now sponsoring legislation that would promote more unethical behavior among the county employees. This proposed legislation would provide medical benefits to homosexual and domestic partners of county employees is ripe for fraud. Currently, the way the legislation is written, I would be able to obtain medical benefits with the county if I move in with my girlfriend. She is a teacher in the county programs for the mentally disabled. We could say that we are domestic partners, and we would have to provide very little proof. And if I moved out three months later, she would not be mandated to report it. Our county cannot afford more fraud. Cleveland, the best location in the nation, was built on strong marriages and nuclear families, not on domestic partnerships. Just as counterfeit money weakens the local economy, so too will counterfeit marriages weaken our neighborhoods. The moral poverty is closely tied to economic poverty. I have often heard Mike Travissano on the radio say, "Let's put the family back together," during discussions of problems in our communities. The six sponsors of this ordinance are promoting more fraud, more sexually transmitted diseases, more HIV/AIDS, more depression, and more domestic violence in this county. Any police officer will tell you that the most frequent call for help is due to domestic violence. These six sponsors represent the poorest neighborhoods of Cuyahoga County. The American College of Pediatricians has stated that homosexuality is not a genetically-determined, unchangeable trait. Many adults have successfully left the gay lifestyle with the help of organizations such as Exodus International and Focus on the Family. The liberal French government studied the unhealthy homosexual lifestyle for over one year and decided that it was not good for its children. So you will not find domestic partnership legislation in France. I urge you to listen to the pediatricians and have courage like the legislators in France and put the well-being of our children ahead of any so-called rights of a very small group of sexually confused adults. Please vote no on this proposed ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Durica. Anyone else?
Yes, Madam Chair, Hannah Garabee. I apologize if I misstated that. Also, for the record, calling the roll for Councilman Jones.
Proceed, Ms. Garabee.
Yes, hello. Hannah Garabee, Cleveland resident, taxpayer. I have several stories like everyone else. Here's just one. I had some very nice neighbors right across the street, two women who are living together and made no secret of their being lesbian partners. And they were raising a daughter, a daughter. They called her their daughter. And we had a lot of nice conversations because they were very personable, nice neighbors of ours, very neighborly. Well, one of the times was really not very pleasant. The girl was also present, a 12-year-old or so, and they're going on and telling me how, "This kid, we thought we got good stock, good stock." A child, will any mother call her child a good stock? But look at her, even to this day, at 12 years old, she's still wetting her bed. What the heck is wrong with her?" And then they went into all sorts of awful details, which a neighbor should never know, okay? The girl hung her head hiding like this, embarrassed. This happened more than once. I've had more than one experience like this, okay? This is one of the very bad things that, now, if these children do get adopted, which could be the next step after these benefits, this is leading up to benefits for, or medical benefits, is leading up to also possibility for county children to be adopted, adopted by two of the same sex, no. A man and woman were meant to raise a child the way they're meant to be conceived. It's psychologically harmful to the children. It's very dangerous for society. The problems that come out of these children who have that hard time, just think that I saw so bad, and it's not only one story, but I know I don't have time for more than one stories, and I don't want to, I want to leave others. The opportunity also is very harmful. We all know it, we're just putting our heads in sand. We know it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Ilona Frank.
Having heard the approximate $1 million first-year cost of implementing this health care benefit for domestic partners strikes me as not only fiscally irresponsible, but painfully apathetic to the economic climate of our country, state, and county. Times are hard. Fiscal prudence and restraint should be paramount, in my opinion. As a historical reflection, FDR froze salaries, and in order to attract top-notch employees, employers devised the medical benefit as the carrot dangling from the stick. It seems to me that what was once an enticement has now morphed into an entitlement for all. As you know, in 2004, over 62% of Ohio voters endorsed the constitutional amendment strictly defining marriage as between one man and one woman and thereby awarding all benefits to that arrangement. If work games are going to twist that bedrock concept and our tax dollars are going to be involved, shouldn't there be town hall meetings all across the county at night so that everyone has an ample opportunity to discuss and completely understand what council is considering? When trailblazing benefits are for the greater good, commendation is in order. If, on the other hand, trailblazing rewards only a select few with special rights, then it's time for corrective action. Citizens for Community Values, based in Cincinnati, is aware that last year Bowling Green ramrodded through a similar measure. This year, all those council members who supported it are being challenged at the ballot box by traditional people who, by the way, are expected to win and to repeal this measure. I'm urging you, in the strongest way possible, to permanently table this issue and, at the very least, to vote no now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frank.
Next speaker on this issue is William Brownlee.
Brownlee.
Mm-hmm. I have come tonight to voice my personal opinion, but more than my personal opinion, on the ordinance to extend health care benefits beyond those who are legally married in the state of Ohio. It is my understanding of the Ohio Constitution in Article 15, which states, "Only a union between one man and one woman may be a marriage valid in or recognized by this state and its political subdivisions. This state and its political subdivisions shall not create or recognize a legal status for relationships of unmarried individuals that intends to approximate the design, qualities, significance, or effect of marriage." It says specifically in the Ohio Constitution, Article 15, that "No recognized legal status shall be given for relationships of unmarried individuals that intend to bring the effects of marriage." As a county employee, under this new ordinance, health insurance benefits would go beyond, go to those beyond those who are married. As it stands right now, a county employee, as a county employee, health insurance benefits for a spouse is the effect of being married. Receiving health insurance benefits for a spouse is the result of being married. If we choose to then take that result, or that effect, as Article 15 of the Ohio State Constitution says, if we intend to take that effect and apply it to those who are not married, we are in strict violation of the Ohio Constitution. I urge, beyond political beliefs, personal beliefs, religious beliefs, I urge this council to vote no on this legislation because, as it stands currently, it would be in violation of our state's constitution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brownlee.
Okay, and the final speaker who wishes to address counsel regarding Disability Employment Awareness Month is Mr. Wesley Warren.
Mr. Warren, do you need the platform adjusted at all?
I think I got it.
Okay.
My name is Wesley Warren. Good evening. Thank you for this time. To the Councilwoman Conwell, through the chair, I thank you for helping me put this on the agenda this evening. Again, my name is Wesley Warren, and I volunteer for the Cuyahoga County Advisory Committee for Persons with Disabilities and the Workforce Employment Subcommittee. On October 3, President Barack Obama proclaimed October to be National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Each year, as I understand it, this body has also made such similar proclamation. I was a participant in a meeting where I heard for the first time a startling statistic from 2005. I hope I heard the facts correctly. There were two groups of graduates from high school, one group disabled and the other able-bodied. The probability that the one able-bodied person to be employed is 78%, and the disabled only 38%. This should cause some concern for each and every one of you, especially if these numbers hold true for today or have widened in any way, and I suspect they have. It has been more than 20 years since the signing into law the Americans with Disabilities Act. From where I sit, I see we have a long way to go to remove the barriers that exist in our society, and there are many. Some of the barriers that I speak of are not plainly seen. They are attitudinal in nature, steeped in decades and possibly centuries of complacency. For people with disabilities, I feel that their greatest battle is that of the will and the mind to take action and responsibility for themselves. There are many tasks which people with disabilities can do and will do if given the opportunity. The other side of that coin is that some people with disabilities need to break through their own barriers, that is, of the will and the mind. When a person with a disability has won the greatest battle of the will and the mind and has decided to take action for themselves, how can and why would anybody stand in his way and yet provide another obstacle, that of practicality, preference, and prejudice? President Barack Obama said in his proclamation, in part, quote, "To win the future, we must harness the power of our nation's richest resource, our people." Americans with disabilities, like all Americans, are entitled to not only full participation in our society, but also full opportunity in our society. Their talents and contributions are vital to the strength of our nation's workforce and our future prosperity. Together, we can ensure persons living with disabilities have equal access to employment and to inclusive, supportive workplaces," end quote. The resolution proclaiming the month of October 2011.
Mr. Warren, your time is up. Would you like to sum up?
Well, I was just going to read the resolution itself.
Well, it'll be read into the record.
I was reading the resolution.
Well, it's in the record.
It's in the record.
Yeah, right.
Very well.
Right. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Has anyone else signed in?
No, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Thank you for all those who offered your comments in the public comment section. Item six, approval of the minutes. The minutes of the meeting of October 11, 2011 are in your packet. If everyone has had an opportunity to read and review those minutes, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Conwell and seconded by Mr. Miller. Is there any discussion? All's in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. The minutes are adopted. I believe Mr. Miller has the motion.
Madam President, in accordance with Rule Number 6B, I would like to make a motion to add Resolution Number 2011-0309 having to do with the specification of property tax rates to the agenda as part of item number 13.
I move by Mr. Miller and seconded by Mr. Schron. Is there any discussion? All's in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, the ayes have it, and that would be as item 13D. Mr. Fitzgerald.
Thank you, thank you very much, Madam President. Just a few things quickly. One is, I'll be having my monthly town hall meeting this time in South Euclid, beautiful city of South Euclid, this week on the 26th at Notre Dame College, so I would invite any or all of you to participate or to attend with me. A couple of things, I know we're going to have them up on the agenda, the item. First of all, I just wanted to tell you that we, on behalf of the administration, I want to just tell you and compliment especially Councilman Miller about the manner and the way in which the budget discussions have been going, and I hope we've fulfilled your expectations. If there are, but this is the first time we've been through this, and you've been through this, and so if there are any deficiencies or ways that we can provide additional detail or improve it for next year, just, I know you'll let us know, but we feel like they've been going on schedule and very well, and I hope you've had the same impression. We are, of course, under, it's a difficult financial situation. There's a lot of variables that hopefully we won't have next year. And some of those variables have to do with economic trends and state funding, but also some of them have to do with the way that we're organized. And there are a number of things that are going to be before you in the coming weeks that will help us more fully define the way that we organize ourselves. One of them is creating a Department of Communications so we can transfer some employees that are right now do some type of public information functions but are spread across various parts of the bureaucracy and then transferring them and then consolidating that, so you'll be seeing that. Another item is, of course, the classification study, which is very complex, but I'm going to be asking you to expedite your deliberations on that as quickly as possible because it affects, it affects the rapidity with which we can make personnel decisions, which does have, which do have financial implications as well. So I want to thank you in advance for your speedy consideration of those matters. Another variable that we've been, that we've been struggling with are, what's our tax rate going to be next year? I know we're going to be talking about this again later, but our recommendation is that we will have the same levy for the same millage that will be on in the spring, in the spring primary, and we believe that we can, again, although there's a lot of pressure on the budget, that we can live with the current tax rate without changing the process or the amount of millage, even though we know where it's going to yield less because of declines in property values. And then the last variable that I mentioned is just union negotiations, and I know we're going to talk about it later in the meeting, but I just want to reiterate it because I think it's such an important thing. I think that, I just want to compliment the team, both the team, some of the folks that were already here, and some of the additions that we've made to the Law Department. So Law Director McLough, but also Ed Morales and Chris Russ, they've just done a great job, and I think that that's reflected in the kind of contracts we have. So the agreement that we negotiated with AFSCME, I think, is just so important, and first of all, I think it's the most sweeping change in the way, in any agreement that we've had in recent memory of the county in terms of the number of provisions that we changed and the concessions that the union was willing to make. I was not optimistic at the start of the negotiations, and so my expectations were exceeded, and it's a contract that I'm proud of, that the union approved it just the other day, and I hope this body will as well. I also think that it is, regardless of what happens with SB 5 and Issue 2, and whether it succeeds or whether it fails, this shows that you can get significant savings for the taxpayer while negotiating with your bargaining units, with collective bargaining units. And whether some people believe that or don't believe that, this is an actual example of it working. There are huge concessions on health care, there are significant concessions on wages, and there are also a number of suggestions on everything from disciplinary to sick leave usage to step increases for new employees, something that the county had never dealt with before. And they're far in excess of what has sometimes been portrayed for unions' willingness to negotiate. This union was willing to negotiate. And, you done, Chuck? And, were you celebrating what I said? That's okay.
It was his birthday on Sunday, so we can give him a break.
Okay. I know you don't, well, never mind. But the union, I just want to express my gratitude to the union because they were willing to negotiate at a time where that union has been asked to take furloughs and has had furloughs imposed upon it and layoffs imposed upon it and difficult working conditions and everything else, they're still willing to negotiate. They didn't get everything they wanted, we didn't get everything we wanted, but it is a good deal for the taxpayers. And it has also increased parity between union and non-union employees. We didn't want to have a situation where the non-union employees have one health care system and the union employees have something completely different, and where this is really, we are now, assuming that you approve it this evening, most county employees are now going to be on that, on that plan, on that 90-10 plan. And it's going to set the stage for, I think, all the rest of the union negotiations. So I just think it's very important. That concludes my report, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Item eight, consideration of a motion of counsel for first reading adoption. Madam Clerk.
Motion Number 2011-0048, a motion establishing the 2012 schedule of county council meetings.
Council is still in discussions regarding this matter. We have a number of important issues regarding the budget and bigger issues, and there's some things that are coming up on the agenda we're not really sure about the schedule. So I'm going to table this matter at this point. Item nine. Yes. Pardon me? Oh, yes, item nine, committee report and consideration of a motion, counsel for second reading under suspension of the rules. It'd be Rule 9D. Ms. Simon.
I move we suspend the rules.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Simon, seconded by Mr. Gallagher. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the rules are suspended as to item nine.
Motion Number 2011-0049, a motion confirming the county executive's appointment of individuals to serve on the Cuyahoga Regional HIV Health Services Planning Council and declaring the necessity that this motion become immediately effective. The individuals are Ann Avery, Chris Ritter, Miriam Ampere, and Michael Foreman.
Move to adopt.
Second. Moved by Mr. Schron and seconded by Ms. Conwell. Is there any discussion on this? Does this complete the board that we've been appointing people?
Madam President, there will be two more additional people. Two names came off, they stepped down, they did not want to serve on the board, so we will have two more names that will come.
What's the full count? It's like 21 people?
No, I think it's a few more.
Okay, whatever.
Yeah, a few more than that.
All right, any other discussion? All's in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the four individuals are appointed. Item 10, consideration of an ordinance of council for first reading adoption and suspension of rules, Rule 9D and 12, by Ms. Simon.
I move we suspend the rules.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Simon, seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Any discussion on suspension of the rules? All's in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the rules are suspended. Item 0052.
Ordinance Number 2011-0052, an ordinance amending the Cuyahoga County Code of Ethics as amended and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective.
Thank you.
You want to move it?
Can I move?
Move it first.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I move by Mr. Greenspan, seconded by Mr. Schron. Mr. Greenspan, I think you want to be heard on this.
Thank you, Madam President. As we crafted our ethics ordinance there, and as it's being implemented, obviously, as we move forward with new legislation, this is groundbreaking legislation, not only for Cuyahoga County, but it's very comprehensive in its nature, there have been, as we're working with our other ordinances and the operations of the county, some situations that have presented themselves that we need to modify the ethics ordinance to be more inclusionary and in some instances, be more friendly to businesses. There have been, in the last few weeks, some groups that have expressed interest regarding some of our provisions and have requested some exemptions, and I believe that those requests for exemptions and then a process for exemptions really make sense. And I'll kind of explain what some of those are on page 16 as an example in our package. Section H, under transparency, the language has been added to include unless disclosures otherwise prohibited by law. We talked about transparency and the inclusion of names on a registry for the inspector general to post. However, it's been determined that in some instances, and I'll talk further about some exemptions, but as relates to foster care of children as an example, that information is...
but as relates to foster care of children as an example, that information may not, and by court order, may not be allowed to be disseminated. So this language will exempt their names from being disclosed, as, as an example. So unless provided by law. Sections K, section K is a new section. And I can go through some of the genesis as to what, why this section is added. But what we're basically saying there is to exclude these types of organizations or these types of, of entities. So for example, and this applies to the exemption of paying the $100 registration fee and attending ethics training. For example, political subdivisions, they're already bound by Ohio Ethics, Ethics laws. They still will have to sign the ethics statement and other documents. They're just exempt from paying the $100 and attending training. Persons or entities who receive direct payments or reimbursements for emergency purposes, this would include, as I mentioned, temporary foster care. Sometimes these, these actions happen so quickly that we're unable to provide the 15 days and go through the process. So these individuals will still be required to sign the ethics statement, but they will not be required to pay the $100 or to attend training. Persons who received funds through sponsored, county-sponsored programs like the storefront renovation program, which is really the genesis for, for this item. The purpose for us requiring people to, and entities to sign the ethics statement is to ensure that they use county funds properly, as, as an example. These are reimbursements. So obviously, if we find that the, the request for reimbursement is not appropriate with the design as it was originally awarded, then we have the ability to not to, to reimburse them. So this basically says on a reimbursement basis, they are excluded from paying the $100 or from, from attending ethics training. But once again, they still have to sign the statements. And the same thing with court reporters and expert witnesses. So that's the, the provision for exemptions there. The, the next section, which is a new section, 37, provides an exemption provision to the ordinance itself. And fundamentally, what it says is the inspector general, with the approval of the Board of Control, which council members serve on, can grant exemptions. However, if an exemption of one of the two entities does not view an exemption as being necessary, the appeal process would be to council. And the chair would then either have it heard before committee of the hall or send it to the appropriate committee. And then a list of, on, on Section 37(c), basically says a list of the exemptions will be posted on the website, obviously unless the disclosure is prohibited by law. That's kind of what we're doing here is, is making the process a little easier. We don't, in my opinion, lose any control or oversight. And everyone is still bound by the same ethics ordinance. We're just streamlining the process. And I think one of the, one of the benefits to us being able to do this and respond in this way, and as you know, I'm not a fan of first reading suspension of rules unless there's a significant urgency here. There is one, an urgency, an urgent matter with this in that the storefront renovation program deadline is October 31st, correct? It's October 31st and we will not meet until after that deadline passes. We want to ensure that this goes into place beforehand so that those businesses have an opportunity to apply. Because if not, the storefront renovation program will not be able to move forward. And it's a program that, that is necessary. So I think by adopting this, this shows that we're responsive to, to circumstances within the county that present themselves in our ability to modify ordinances to fit the needs of our community. And I would urge council's support of this, of this amendment.
All right, is there other discussion?
President, thank you. To the law director, have you had a chance to look at these exclusions and look at the language that's before us?
Yes, briefly. And I think the, the, the primary concern I have over this actually is not about the exemptions. It's about the appeal process because I don't want to create an administrative process that all of a sudden we end up having what's called a 2506 appeal from council then to somebody to be able to go to court and overturn a decision. You know, the, the preferred route would be that, that the change would happen through changing the legis, you know, if council wanted to change it, we'd just do additional exemptions in the, in the legislation. However, I, I, I don't have a problem with it passing tonight because the discussions with, with Councilman Greenspan has been, you know, we are going to come forth with a set of amendments to the, to the, to the ethics ordinance. And this was almost an emergency process that needed to happen on a first reading. But we'll be, we'll be able to deal with those issues and the likelihood of anything being appealed here. We're talking about $100 fee by a vendor, you know, there's, it'll be amended well before any chance of appeal happening. So I don't have a problem with it passing as is, with the understanding that we're going to be coming back with a set of revisions, you know, to clarify a number of issues in the ordinance. I'll give you an example. For instance, when you have a large company like Home Depot or some, who do you train? So some of the things that we want to make sure are clarified in the ordinance, the inspector, the inspector general is dealing with those issues. But it'll be, you know, go to committee, it'll go through the normal process for the consideration. But this needed to happen very quickly because of the time limit.
Madam President, just, just thank you very much, Mr. Law Director. Just a comment. We had discussions about the sale of tax certificates and how it might be a crunch in order to get that done and how the ethic code might apply to them. And if this council is making exception, and rightly so perhaps in this case, that I hope we're open, if need be, to, to make other changes to, to allow other county programs to proceed if there's a time crunch.
And council, what this does is actually, it does provide it because there, the, and that's sort of something we have to be always cognizant of when drafting legislation. There's, I mean, we ran into this with the contracting ordinance and found a way for it, is there is no way to anticipate everything and legislate for it. You know, we can't put all the exemptions in the ordinance because there will always come up something that we missed. So what this does is it exactly has the process to get an exemption if something comes up, if the inspector general agrees, if the border control agrees, that you do have a way to get that exemption on an ongoing basis. And basically, I think on, you can have a process where the inspector general's website or something, you list the exemptions and the date that they were granted. So that could be a way, moving forward to deal with every single situation. The one piece that I'm not comfortable with is, is the appeal because I don't want to be unintentionally creating an appeal from the council to, to the Court of Common Pleas and then from there to the Court of Appeals. And, but we'll hopefully fix that before it even becomes an issue.
All right, thank you. Anything further, Mr. Rogers?
I'm just wondering if there's, there's going to be situations where time is of the essence. And I understand the justification for having the inspector general and county border control exemption. But I'm wondering if there's some of those situations, since it's only due to time, we may want to do something on the back end where we still ask them to sign or to participate in our ethics program. I, I don't know how we would do that, but.
Yeah, I, I'm just wondering, I mean, I understand the time issue, but there's still, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to uphold, uphold a higher standard here. And I don't want people to just be able to come in under the radar simply because of an issue of time.
Madam President, no, I, I believe I understand, understand your statement. Please understand they're still required, everyone is still required to sign the ethics statement. They're still held accountable to every provision within, within this. This just would exempt them from the training and paying the $100. But to your point, and, and maybe that's something we can look at. You're, you're saying if it's emergent, if it's urgent that the exemption is granted for X purpose, we would still require them at some point within X period of time to attend the training. That's something we'll, we'll make note of. And that, that's a very good suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? All right, all those in favor of item 0052 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. The ordinance is so amended. Mr. Greenspan, yes?
Thank you. I want to thank my colleagues for passing that. I also would like to ask the Department of Development to send out first thing tomorrow morning, a letter to the economic development directors and the mayors letting them know that this exemption is in place because we've all received phone calls regarding the storefront renovation program in particular, to let them know that, that this has passed and proceed.
All right, thank you. All right, item 11, committee report in consideration of an ordinance of counsel for second reading. Item 0042.
Ordinance number 2011-0042, an ordinance providing for adoption of a policy granting health benefits to domestic partners of county employees and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective.
This matter has been heard twice before the Joint Justice Affairs and Human Resource Committee. And it's the request of Ms. Simon and Ms. Conwell, this be continued on their committee and be referred back to their committee. And they will post the date of the next committee meeting on the website. Item 12, committee report in consideration of an ordinance of counsel for third reading adoption.
Ordinance number 2011-0039, an ordinance establishing procedures governing the use by the county of alternate construction project delivery methods, including construction manager at risk, design, build, and general contracting project delivery methods for public construction projects and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective.
Move to adopt. Second.
Moved by Mr. Schron and seconded by Mr. Miller. Mr. Schron?
Thank you, Madam President. This is, as we have talked about, other historic pieces of legislation coming out of our new council, new form of government, this falls into that same category. And I want to thank Mr. Miller for his assistance in making sure this coincides with the contracting language for basic purchasing and procurement legislation. Thank you, Mr. Miller, for your assistance in this area. And for everybody that, that sat on the Economic Development Committee for the, the hearing of this. We started this process back in the spring. And at that point in time, there was not a single county in the, in the state of Ohio that was utilizing all of the, the new, what are being used as construction technique alternatives. And so we started the process by bringing in folks from all aspects of, of the construction industry, making sure that all their voices were heard. And with that, we have adopted, or would, through the committee and bringing forth and ask for your consideration this evening, is alternative construction reform techniques. These techniques, such as design, build, will help speed along construction within county projects. And as we know, time actually is money when you're talking about the building and construction projects out there. We will be, again, the first organization, the first county to have the construction manager at risk whereby we will, on both these projects, we're going to be looking at guaranteed maximum pricing contracts that will come forth from the construction industry. And then lastly, we will be designing a list of, of design construction project delivery methods that will allow to have a, a list of qualified candidates. So for those projects that are under $200,000, the Director of Public Works will be able to pick from qualified list of candidates to go forth, again, speeding up the time, lowering the cost for all the county residents, and saving us tax dollars. Following on this, you'll find there'll be another piece of legislation that'll be coming down the road only a short time after this, in which case, as we saw with Mr. Applebaum when he presented some of the updates in regards to the, the convention and medical mark project, that in the smaller projects, what we found available was that on the quoting and the construction projects on the small side, that this was a place where we didn't guarantee the outcome, but we guaranteed that everyone would have an opportunity. And what we found by the, by having the small business set aside, that we were actually able to see that the minority community was winning those contracts, that the female business community was entering into those contracts. And it was a perfect place for those small and new emerging businesses to grow and become larger businesses so they can then take on responsibilities as they move forward. With that, one of the issues that kept coming up is the inability to sometimes get bonding for small and startup businesses. And as a result, we have been able, working with the law director, to look down to the state of Ohio. There's been some changes down at, at the state house level to ease up the bonding requirements for smaller business. But it still does not allow all the opportunities that we believe would be presenting. And so you're going to see new legislation will come forth whereby we'll create a surety bond fund that would sit, hopefully sit behind the, the bond of the bond surety company. And we, as a county, would help those small startup businesses to, to get the contracts, to go forward, to grow, and another way to help grow jobs here in northeastern Ohio. So I would urge my colleagues to support the legislation 0039. And look forward to seeing another follow-on piece of legislation in a few months as events itself through the process for being, again, the first county in the state of Ohio to be presenting a surety bond, to sit behind as a guarantee in a responsible position behind those surety bonds out there. So with that, thank you, Madam President, for the opportunity to present this to the, the public and to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Schron. Any other comment?
Madam President.
Mr. Miller, then Mr. Jemanna?
Madam President and my colleagues, I just want to commend Councilman Schron for his vision and leadership in, in bringing this legislation forward. This was a six-month process. And there was a lot of consultation with leaders in, in industry and labor. It, it was well researched. It is complex. And it required a tremendous amount of work. And just want to congratulate you on, on a very significant and important piece of legislation.
Thank you.
Mr. Jemanna?
My name.
Okay, you want to add Mr. Jemanna's name to legislation?
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Just briefly, I just wanted to counsel, to compliment Councilman Schron. I mean, he and I talked about this concept very, very early in the year. And I was, I've been supportive of it. But he really had the vision for it. And he's exactly right. Some of the things that we're talking about, doing a sequels to this with the, with the surety bond concept is very important. There have been a lot of, there's been a lot of rhetoric about what, you know, inclusion and how it would be nice to, you know, to have more inclusion and more representation. But this is something very practical that is going to create jobs and is going to spread economic opportunity to people that have never had it before. And it's just, it's really nice to see the county doing, you know, being the first in the state to do it and working together very cooperatively. I just want to compliment him for, for it. And it's been a pleasure working with him on it.
And I apologize for not identifying that right off the bat, that the county executive and myself, we spoke early on on this about the vision of taking it not only from these three construction techniques, but the acceptance of the idea of, of bringing, bringing forth the bond, the surety sitting behind that for that fuller inclusion and that broader vision. And I, I thank him for all the support and all the support from the Law Department on this thing, too.
Anything further?
Madam Chair, please add my name also.
Mr. Jones and Ms. Conwell, would you add my name also?
My name, Simon.
Gallagher.
Gallagher.
All right, say hi to everybody.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, all those, all those in favor of item 0039 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. The ordinance is adopted.
Thank you.
Item 13, consideration of a resolution for first reading adoption under suspension of rules 9D and 12A. And I just want to point out, this includes items A, B, C, and the additional item D. Ms. Simon?
Thank you, Madam President. I move we suspend the rules.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Simon, seconded by Ms. Gallagher, Mr. Gallagher, for suspension of rules. Any discussion? All those, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. The rules are suspended. Item 0296.
Resolution number 2011-0296, a resolution amending the 2011 annual appropriation measure by providing for additional fiscal appropriations from the general fund and other funding sources for appropriation transfers between budget accounts and for cash transfers between budgetary funds in order to meet the budgetary needs of various county departments, offices, and agencies, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
All right, moved by Mr. Rogers and was that seconded by?
No.
Mr. Miller? This is our, sort of bi-weekly transfer of funds. For those who are interested, the material is all posted online. It just involves transfers of funds from various accounts. Any discussion on any matters? We've all had an opportunity to look through it. We don't have any questions this week. All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. Item 0301.
Resolution number 2011-0301, a resolution proclaiming the month of October 2011 as Disability Employment Awareness Month in Cuyahoga County, profit by investing in workers with disabilities and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective. with disabilities, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Greenspan and seconded by Mr. Miller. I would like to thank Mr. Warren, who I believe is here any longer, who spoke so ably on this point. Any other discussion on this matter? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. Ask to Disabilities Employment Month. Item 0302.
Resolution number 2011-0302, a resolution proclaiming the month of November 2011 as Adoption Awareness Month in Cuyahoga County, honoring selected adoptive families as part of a recognition event, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
Moved by Mr. Schran and seconded by Ms. Conwell. Is any discussion on this? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it. November is officially Adoption Awareness Month in Cuyahoga County. Item D is item 0309, which is our added item.
Resolution number 2011-0309, a resolution authorizing the county executive to accept the rates as determined by the Budget Commission, authorizing the necessary tax levies, and certifying them to the county fiscal officer, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Schran and seconded by Mr. Brady. I believe we need a presentation from the financial office, fiscal officer on this one, or explanation. Mr. Steen, are you on the hot seat for this? Or Mr. Rubino?
Good evening, Matt Rubino, Office of Budget and Management. The item before you is to reaffirm the existing unvoted and voted tax rates for the county for next year, for 2012. These are the same rates that were presented to council as part of the tax budgets mission back in June. We are also required to have the rates approved for 2012 or for any year. So it includes the inside millage, the 1.45, and then the existing rates for next year, for collection for next year, for both human service levies, the BODD levy. We have a voted jail piece that's in there, and we also have you approve the county library voted levy.
Are these the same rates as last year? Do they not reflect any increase?
No, the only thing that changes from year to year, Madam President, would be the split of the inside millage. That is split between operations and general debt service. So based on how much debt service we have each year, we'll modify that split of the 1.45 between operations and debt service. And everything else remains the same unless a voted levy has changed.
And this matter has to be passed in October, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that's why it's brought to us now.
Yes.
All right, any other questions or discussions regarding this? All right, we prepared to vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. Thank you. Item 14, Consideration of a Resolution for First-Reading Adoption Under Suspension of Rules 9D and 12A. Ms. Simon?
Madam President, I move we suspend the rules.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Simon and seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Is any discussion on suspension of the rules? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. The rules are suspended. Item 0308.
Resolution number 2011-0308, a resolution approving a collective bargaining agreement between Cuyahoga County and American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Ohio Council, Local 1746 AFL-CIO, covering approximately 1,250 employees and 81 classifications in the Department of Health and Human Services for the period July 1, 2011 through June 30, 2014, directing that funds necessary to implement the collective bargaining agreement be budgeted and appropriated, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Chairperson.
Yes.
It's my understanding, Madam Chairperson and the Law Director, that it's not necessary for the council to go into executive session. Is that true?
That is at council's discretion. We don't see the, we are willing to present the deal. It's a public record what the deal is, and if issues arise that would necessitate going into executive session, we can do that, but we think it could be done in open session if that's.
All right, and you move me for passage, Mr. Brady?
I am.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Brady and seconded by Mr. Miller. All right, I believe Mr. Morales and Mr. McCoo who wanted to make a statement regarding this.
Well, thank you very much, Madam President and members of council. I just want to quickly recognize actually a couple, a number of the union members who are here with us today. We have Kim Hereford here, the Vice President, Tracy Canfield, Philip Besik, Vanessa Anderson, and Adele Burl Williams. Did I miss somebody? Oh, and Pamela Brown is here, the President. I'm sorry, I missed her. We think in many ways, this is the classic example of how this process should work. In going into the negotiations, we had a number of goals. We were, number one, had a charter mandate in terms of standardization of benefits. So we needed to go into the negotiations in terms of how we meet the charter's mandate on that front. Number two, we needed to address the county's goals and needs. The county obviously has economic needs in terms of, we're dealing with tight economic budgetary times, but how do we do that in a way that is fair to our employees who basically are the blood of our county and the functioning of our county? Number two, the county has operational needs in terms of, how do we, we needed to make sure that we amend this contract in every way possible to make it functional, to make it workable. This is a contract that had in it provisions that go into effect effective 1972. I mean, that's sort of the long history, the bargaining history that we had with this contract. Things from, you know, how vacation is scheduled, to how the grievance process worked. We wanted to remove all, at least as much as possible, all the ambiguities that we could remove from the contract to make sure that there is no friction going forward, that there is a process that works, that we understand the process, the language is clear, that the union understands the process, that the language is clear for the union. This also worked in a way, in terms of, the charter worked, in how we prepared for the negotiations and how we undertook the negotiations, because we really were able to act as a full team on behalf of the county. So the Director of HR was involved from the very beginning. She organized, she actually convened a meeting with all the involved supervisors, and we went through all the operational needs with the supervisors day to day, what issues were you having under this contract, to see in terms of some of the operational changes that we needed to negotiate for in the contract. We used the county stat process to see what issues we had in terms of how we can improve and then create efficiencies. Thirdly, with the new structure where we actually have a cabinet that works together. So the fiscal officer was part of the process from the get-go. In the preparation for the negotiations, as part of the negotiations, that's something that was unheard of before under the commissioners and the auditor and the treasurer, they're all independent. We actually worked as one team together in preparing for this contract. Thirdly, I think very important, is we went in the negotiations in good faith, and we had both sides actually operating in good faith. We used the federal mediator, Doug Corwin, and he was very much instrumental in making this deal happen from the get-go. Both sides presented that they were interested in making this work and doing everything in our capacity to make it work. We went with open arms and full disclosure. So to give you just some of the examples that happened during these negotiations, we had Wade Steen come in and give a presentation as to the budgetary issues and then the fiscal issues that we were dealing with with the county and our abilities. We had the Director, Rick Warner, come and address the union about the organizational restructuring that was happening through this council. I apologize, I'm losing my voice. And the new divisions that were being established and the administrators in terms of functionally, the departments, how the departments were going to work and how the union was going to interact with them. We even had the Director of HR come and present about the restructuring of the HR department, about the processing of FMLA requests, things of that nature to answer any questions that we have. Even at some point, one point, we had Matt Hawes come and do a presentation, a brief presentation about FMLA and how it plays its interplay with other leagues. So we ended up having 13 days of negotiation, I think total, I may be missing the number of days, with the last day literally beginning in the morning, I think 9:00 or 9:30 p.m. on Friday, and ended up finishing approximately at 1:00 a.m. on Saturday, October 8th, when we called the executive and broke the news to him at that point in terms of the deal. I had emailed to the council members a redlined copy of the actual collective bargaining agreements that has all the revisions in it and some of the more material terms in it. Also, we just passed an executive summary of the agreement and some of the things that we did. One thing is the mileage and liability insurance. We raised the mileage reimbursement rate because this is a, this is a group of employees that uses their cars quite a bit to travel, to service clients, and the mileage reimbursement rate was a material issue. So we, the rate in the contract was 52 and a half cents. We agreed to raise it effective upon ratification by, I think, one cent. But what would happen is effective July 1, 2012, which is when the new contract year would go into effect. This is a three-year contract from July 1, 2011 through 2014. On July 1, 2012, the IRS mileage rate would kick in. So at that point forward, they would have the IRS mileage rate, which is, I think, right now somewhere in the, it's a few cents above the negotiated, the initial negotiated rate. On health insurance, and I think this is, this is a very critical thing to understand, because I think sometimes people can confuse two aspects of health insurance. One is the structure of the health insurance plans, and that is where we have the 9D-10 and the deductibles and the coinsurance provisions. And then the other component, which is the contributions, which is, you know, out of your payroll, your monthly paycheck, how much is taken out. On the structure of the plans, we succeeded in standardizing the benefit across, along as the same way as it is with the other employees in the county. So they will go under the plan that was presented to this council that was endorsed by the Human Resources Commission and endorsed by this council, the 9D-10 plans with 250 deductibles for the individual and then family plans. And on the contribution, on the contribution level, what we negotiated was the 9D-10, that basically they would pay 10% of the plan costs monthly. So that is on the contribution level. Also, we put in there, because part of what the county is trying to do is the wellness plans and then the ability to regain, regain part of the deductible if you undertake some of the wellness initiatives. So that is in there, the flexibility to do that in there. I need, just to sort of make it clear, the metro plan is offered at no cost. We're talking about the other plans. So basically, it's the same set of, set of opportunities that are available to the other employees. The AFSCME care plan, what happened is, is they had a lower, I think it was a dental coverage than the other county employees have, so we equaled it with the other county employees, but we took out the, 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 prescription copay, I'm sorry. And then on wages, what we did is it's 0% for the first year, so it's 0% through the end of June 31, 2012. And then, and then effective July 1, 2012, in year two, the wage increase would be 1%. And in the third year, which is effective July 1, 2013, it'll be 2%. The other thing that we did is a change in the wage step process, that we added two new steps in the process. We added a step at the very beginning, and then we added a step at the very end for new employees that are not in the system right now. Added another step that would be immediate between the last two steps toward the very end. So this way, a new employee would have two more years to reach the maximum step. We put that in there. I'll stop at that. I'll be very happy to answer any questions. I don't, the county executive, if you wanted to say anything.
No. The only thing I would say is, we're grateful to the union for cooperating in this contract negotiations as they have in the past. We have an excellent relationship with this union, and this group of employees works very hard on behalf of the county. So we'd like to express our thanks to the union and to the employees. And I'd reiterate that the federal mediator, Doug Corwin, was instrumental in getting this job done.
I would, I'm sorry, I would very much echo that. Just one more thing is also, I want to thank the team that worked with us as well. Ed Morales was instrumental in terms of bringing the history of this team and knowing, as a policy advisor in many ways. And Chris Russ was very instrumental also in the negotiation process. So we couldn't have asked for a better team on our end or on the other end, and many of them are here tonight, and we're very happy to have them.
The only thing I just wanted to add is to echo something Majid said, negotiations don't work if you don't have a partner. If the other side doesn't want to negotiate, it doesn't work. We really found that we did have a partner. I wasn't sure what the chances really were, but this team of, the team of our employees and the union folks really worked hard. And they didn't wake me up at 1:00 in the morning when they called. I was watching old recordings of council meetings, as I tend to do on Friday night. That's what I do for fun, and trying to get to sleep. But it really showed, as I said in my opening comments at this, at this meeting and my report to you, it just really showed, I think, that the negotiating process can work. And it didn't all come down, again, the union showed flexibility, not just in those basic economic issues, but they also accepted with us that there were certain things that we could do to just be a better-run organization, to be more rational in the way that we administer the work that we have to do. And this is a, an employee group that has had to withstand layoffs, furloughs, one-year 0% increase, you know, temporary contracts, and it's really important for everybody to have as much economic certainty as they can so they can plan their lives. Because going from year to year and trying to guess what your rate of pay and what your benefit package is going to be is no way to plan for a financial future. So we're, we think it's the beginning of showing that we're going to start coming out of kind of the emergency footing we've been on and more, a more responsible and fiscally sustainable strategy that we'll have here in the county.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Mr. Greenspan?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. I'm just asking questions about the term. This agreement goes into effect 7/1 of 11, so it's retroactive?
Yes.
The, so the first year, I see that the increase is 012 each of the years. So the first year started on 7/1?
Yeah, it goes through the end of June 2012.
Okay. The contribution rates that were negotiated, when do those go into effect?
January 1, 2012. So there will be the open enrollment along with the other employees at the end of October, and then those will start October, January 1, 2012.
Do we, do we have any idea, I'm going to steal Mr. Miller's thunder here, I don't mean to.
Go ahead.
Do we have any idea what the budget impact of this is going to be? Have we run any numbers on twofold? Number one, we've got a mid-year adjustment here for the mileage and liability, and we've got, secondly, an impact on the healthcare costs. Do we have any idea what that will be?
The wage increases, my understanding is 1% equals about 650. This is about a $60 million contract for the number of employees that we have annually. So over the life of the contract, it's about $200 million contract when you add the benefits component to it. The impact of a 1% increases is about $650,000. So for year two, that's the additional impact. For year three, roughly multiply that by two, it's 2% above, but you multiply that by two.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. So 650 per year, so that would be from July 1?
No, 650 per 1%.
Right, but the 650 we're talking is from July 1 of 2012 to the, is to June 30 of 2013. So the six-month impact is 375,000.
Correct.
Again, 2012, okay. I can tell you I didn't mean to interrupt the one.
625,000.
625. Six-twenty-five.
And the, the.
It's three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand.
Three-hundred-and-twenty-five, correct.
The, the health insurance savings, and that will obviously depend in terms of how people, how many people go to Metro, so there is no exact science to estimate that, but our consultants believe it's about somewhere in the neighborhood of one-point-one to one-point-two million in savings annually for the health insurance savings.
So, five-hundred-and-fifty thousand for the six months. Correct, okay.
No, the, the health insurance plan goes into effect January one.
Of 2012.
So, that would, so for the 2012 budget year, it would be the full one-point-two, approximately.
Okay.
And then the, I'm looking at this, feel free to step in, sorry, my, the, the mileage reimbursement actually, I think, is in somewhere in the neighborhood of about a hundred-and-fifty thousand annually that would kick in. And then the step increases are, are those included in the?
Yeah, but that's, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to calculate, and those are already budgeted for. So, the, the net, the net impact is approximately a million-dollar savings for 2012.
Okay, because the step increase in there eats away at the one-point-five million between the insurance and the wages.
Yes, and the steps, but they're already budgeted as well.
They're already budgeted, okay. Very good, thank you.
Anything further? Mr. Schron?
Madam Chair. Just a question on the, on the, on the health insurance, and so it's, the health insurance is really a two-and-a-half-year piece, is that, if I'm understanding correctly?
Yes.
The contract is three, we've excluded the first half a year out of it? Okay. And I, as a comment, I applaud moving from the seven-point-five percent to a ten percent contribution. I certainly would applaud the team for getting there. And the cost on the, on the wages that you talked about, as far as the one percent on that, what is the actual annual cost of the total increases in wages when you combine percentage and the step increase? What takes place each year as far as from a budgetary standpoint? What's the dollar amount that we're looking at for the life of the contract?
For the life of the contract?
Because we've added two steps also. We've added a new step at the bottom and a step at the top, which means people who would have been topped out at the top are now going to be able to, to.
No, sir, no. That's incorrect.
Oh, so it's only, only new employees are going to be eligible for the top and the bottom?
The new step system did not expand the maximum rate. It just expanded the years to max. So, the, there is a new start rate, and then there is a new intermediate step, which occurs between the second to the last and the maximum rate. So, the maximum rates were not increased.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought you indicated there was.
It just takes longer to get there, that's all.
Gotcha, I thought, I thought you indicated there was two new steps, and that's what, that gave me some concerns as far as whether we had steps on the both ends. All right, thank you. Do you have, do you have the number as far as what, what it actually adds each year by the time you combine percentage and step in the, in the?
Yeah, the total.
Per year?
Salary bill for, for cost for this bargaining unit is sixty million, sixty million dollars. And that's what we anticipate it will be in, in two thousand, in twelve, approximately sixty million dollars.
I think you're asking in terms of the increase?
Right, I was asking in terms of the increase.
Whether the six-fifty includes the, the step increases in it?
You would, you would, it, the sixty million does. So, it would, it would be, you know, approximately sixty-point-three-five.
So, have you, have you worked out the percentage of actual calculation for the three, for each one of the three years then?
Yes, it's, as we said, it's one percent for the second year and two percent.
Well, no, it's not. By the time you add the step increases, it comes out higher than that.
The, the cost of step increases for next year is approximately six-hundred, six-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. But, but that's included in that sixty-million-dollar price tag that I, that I spoke of earlier. So, the, the, the salary cost for this group has been fairly, has been fairly consistent. So, with new employees coming in, old employees leaving, the best estimate would be about, about sixty million, sixty and a half, sixty, perhaps, point-five.
Mike, congratulations on the negotiations. Thank you.
Mr. Miller?
Madam President, to, to Director, I know that the, the federal government has moved the mileage rate around quite a bit over the years, depending on the, on the cost of gas and other things. If, if the federal government were to set a rate less than, than fifty-three-point-five at some point during the life of this contract, how would that be handled?
The, the rate, once we get into the new rate, effective July one, 2012, will be directly pegged to the IRS rate. So, if it goes up, we'll go up, if it goes down, we'll go down. But until July one, 2012, we will be at the new rate of fifty-three and a half cents.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Miller?
Director, regarding the change in the, the step rates, since you only added an additional lower step at the beginning and an additional intermediate step at the end, which makes it take longer to get to the top, it seems like the impact of the step change itself would be, would be a savings rather than an increase in cost. Is that a correct assessment?
That's absolutely a correct statement. That's, that was the intent of it, I think, we think this is, yes.
Okay.
I mean, that was, that was, that was a management request. I mean, we asked, we had originally had some discussions about whether or not we would change the step increase formula entirely, and then we came up, the compromise was that it would be changed for, for new employees. And again, just to be real crystal clear, there aren't new pay ranges, it just is going to take a newer employee two steps longer to get to the same place. So, that's where the cost savings is to the county, because it takes you longer to get the seniority that you would need to get that wage rate. So, the analogy of steps is appropriate, because you're getting to the same floor, but you have to walk up two additional steps to get there.
Okay. Mr. Greenspan?
I'm sorry. Madam President, just, did any Me Too provisions kick in, not in their contract, but in any others as a result of this?
No, the, that's something we're, we're very cognizant of. It exists in the SEIU contract, but that contract expires in 2011. And we have the, the zero wage increases until, until July of 2012, so that would not be triggered.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything further? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and I want to congratulate the union as well.
Item fifteen, consideration of, and thank you for all the union members who are here this evening. Appreciate your participation. Item fifteen, consideration of resolution for first reading referral to committee. Item zero-two-nine-seven.
Resolution number 2011-0297, a resolution declaring the necessity of submitting to the electors of Cuyahoga County the question of a renewal levy of four-point-eight mil Health and Human Services Levy for the purpose of supplementing general fund appropriations for health and human or social services for a period of four years outside the ten-mil limitation in accordance with the provision of section five-seven-zero-five-point-one-nine-one of the Ohio Revice Code.
All right, this matter will be referred to the Health and Human Resources Committee. And did you want it to be heard, Mr. Brady?
Not at this time. I mean, this, this is the way to allow us, obviously, to put the Health and Human Services Levy on ballot, this is the beginning of the process.
All right, and item zero-two-nine-eight.
Resolution number 2011-0298, a resolution determining to proceed with submitting, submitting to the electors of Cuyahoga County to renew an existing four-point-eight mil Health and Human Services Levy for the purpose of supplementing general fund appropriations for health and human or social services for a period of four years outside the ten-mil limitation in accordance with the provisions of section five-seven-zero-five-point-one-nine-one of the Ohio Revice Code.
Will this be referred to Health and Human Services? And do you have any idea when this will be heard in committee, Mr. Brady?
I believe that we're going to have our first hearing this Thursday.
And that will be posted on the website for the exact time and place. All right, item zero-two-nine-nine.
Resolution number 2011-0299, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into a contract with Educational Service Center of Cuyahoga County in the amount not to exceed two-million-two-hundred-fifty-four-thousand-seven-hundred-eighteen dollars for fiscal and administrative services for the Help Me Grow Home Visiting Program for the period July one, 2011 through June thirty, 2012.
This goes to Health and Human Services?
Resolution number 2011-0300, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into a contract with Educational Service Center of Cuyahoga County in the amount not to exceed two-million-three-hundred-seventy-five-thousand-thirty-four dollars for fiscal and administrative services for the federal Part C Early Intervention Program for the Invest in Children Program for the period July one, 2011 through June thirty, 2012.
Health and Human Services?
Resolution number 2011-0303, a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of County of Cuyahoga, Ohio Economic Development Refunding Revenue Bonds Series 2011 Gilmore Academy Project in the amount not to exceed ten million dollars for the purpose of currently refunding Series 2009 bonds issued by the County of Cuyahoga, which assisted in financing the costs of a project within the meaning of chapter one-sixty-five Ohio Revice Code, providing for the pledge of revenues for the payment of such bonds, authorizing the execution of various documents required in connection with said bond issuance, and authorizing and approving related matters, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
This matter will be referred to the Economic Development Committee?
Resolution number 2011-0304, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into contracts with various providers for placement services for the period October one, 2011 through June thirty, 2012, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective with the providers in the amounts not to exceed as printed on the agenda, items fifteen-F one through twenty-eight.
This matter will be referred to Health and Human Services?
Resolution number 2011-0305, a resolution authorizing an award and requisition number two-zero-seven-nine-two to American Bridge Company in the amount of thirty-million-three-hundred-twenty-three-thousand-six-hundred-eighteen dollars, sixty-five cents for rehabilitation of Columbus Road Lift Bridge over the Cuyahoga River in the city of Cleveland, authorizing the county executive to enter into a contract consistent with said award, and authorizing the county engineer on behalf of the county executive to make an application for allocation from county motor vehicle five-dollar license tax funds in the amount of six-million-sixty-four-thousand-seven-hundred-twenty-three dollars, seventy-three cents to fund said contract.
This matter will go to Public Works?
Resolution number 2011-0306, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into amendments to contracts with various providers for residential treatment services for youth for various time periods ending January thirty-one, 2012, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective for the periods of time, the decreases in additional funds and providers as listed on the agenda, items fifteen-H one and two.
I have this going to Justice Affairs. Is this correct, committee? Okay, all right, thank you. This will go to Justice Affairs.
Resolution number 2011-0307, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into an amendment to contract number CE-e-eleven-hundred-five-three-three with TriMoore Corporation for the year-two pavement maintenance program, aprons A-one-B reconstruction and aprons A-two-C-D-one rehabilitation for the period August nine, 2011 through June six, 2012, for additional funds in the amount not to exceed six-hundred-seventy-five-thousand-five-hundred dollars.
This matter will go to Economic Development. Item sixteen, committee report in consideration of resolution for second reading adoption under suspension of a rule, Rule nine-D. Ms. Simon?
Madam President, I move we suspend the rules.
Second.
Removed by Ms. Simon and seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the rules are suspended. Item zero-two-nine-two.
Resolution number 2011-0292, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into a contract with Trans Systems Corporation of Ohio in the amount not to exceed nine-hundred-ninety-four-thousand-two-hundred-sixteen dollars for consultant engineering services for rehabilitation of Columbus Road Lift Bridge over the Cuyahoga River in the city of Cleveland, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Moved by Mr. Jones and seconded by Mr. Rogers. Is there any discussion on this? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item zero-two-nine-three.
Resolution number 2011-0293, a resolution establishing a list of certified providers for occupational skills training services for the individual training account system for the period July one, 2011 through June thirty, 2014, and authorizing the county executive to enter into agreements with said providers for said training services as listed on the agenda, items sixteen-B one through thirty-seven.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Schron and seconded by Ms. Conwell. Any discussion?
We had a great presentation during committee hearing, and I think it's, it's actually a success story that we might want to, might want to hear how this is being utilized as far as, as far as the funding and program. I know we have somebody here from, from that portion of county government.
Basically, these are training programs, the people.
All working and the selection process. It was very, very gratifying to hear what was being said, and I just thought perhaps maybe other members of the council would like to hear, but if, I'm, being an education and training guy, this is exactly where we, we should be supporting programs of this nature, and I thought it was, was well done.
Madam Chairperson.
Mr. Brady?
Please add my name to this legislation.
All right.
There's a companion piece of legislation that will follow after this.
All right.
For in-school and out-of-school.
Madam Chair, add my name also.
All right, Mr. Brady, Mr. Jones, Conwell, Germana, and Conley, Miller.
Rogers.
Gallagher, Rogers. Just put everybody, everyone. And I assume it'll be the same on the next, because it's companion legislation?
Yes.
All right. Now, these, these training programs are really strong, and they're, they're really good in terms of training people, and we got reports in the committee, how these people got jobs and stayed in the community. It was very beneficial.
Representative here, if you, if you want to maybe put it on the record, because I think he told a great story, and he's here, and he came all the way here to, to tell us what, what's going on. It just, it would be refreshing to hear that from, from everybody about the two programs. And then it is also a nice transition from his predecessor, Mr. Bender, to where we are right now, as far as the continuity.
Good evening, Frank Brechner from the Department of Workforce Development. These two pieces of legislation are funded under the Federal Workforce and Vetsman Act, federal grants to assist both businesses and eligible job seekers find employment. And this first piece of legislation is a list of training provider schools that assist our laid-off individuals or economically disadvantaged individuals find employment. And the good news here is, boy, about a year ago, we had about double the number of providers, but we kind of took a look at inventory and said, no, we're not really getting what we need to be getting. We need to find employment. It's not something to educate people, but they need to also complete training and find a job. And we believe that the, this group of providers does that. And we entered into different types of agreements with these providers that, you know, they will be paid completely upon a person not only completing the training, but finding a job. So, you know, we're very happy that we think we have a good list of, of providers, and that we are training people where the jobs are in-demand occupations.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Greenspan?
Madam President, I just want to add to that, to the comments that were said here. This actually, I think there's, as we develop our scholarship program, I believe there's a lot for us to learn from what is happening with these programs, as to how we can really predict outcomes, which I think is really what we're working on in this, in general, when we talk about scholarships and making sure that the dollars are used effectively. And I think that the program, as outlined in these two pieces of legislation, really are something we should look closely to model our, our scholarship program after, or at least pull some strong attributes from it.
Thank you. I think those comments were voiced at the committee meetings, well said.
Right, that's one of the reasons I want it to be heard by the public.
All right, any other comments? All those in favor indicate by. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, items adopted. Item 0294.
Resolution number 2011 0294, a resolution authorizing awards on requisition number 19758 to various providers in the total amount of $2,995,616 for Workforce Investment Act in-school and out-of-school youth training for the period September 1, 2011 through June 30, 2012, and authorizing the county executive to enter into contracts consistent with said awards for the providers and in the amounts as printed on the agenda, items 16C 1 through 11.
Move to adopt?
Moved by Mr. Schron and seconded by Ms. Conwell. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, resolution is adopted. Item 095. Yeah, I said, everybody's name is on this one too.
Resolution number 2011 0295, a resolution amending the 2011 annual appropriation measure by providing for additional fiscal appropriations from the general fund and other funding sources for appropriation transfers between budget accounts and for cash transfers between budgetary funds in order to meet the budgetary needs of various county departments, offices, and agencies, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt?
Moved by Mr. Schron and seconded by Mr. Brady. Any discussion on this? Mr. Miller?
Madam President, this is a measure to provide for the, for the new contracts, for the, for the board and care of children. And, and the, the idea is that, that the administration had hoped to do a major restructuring in this area, but, but it's not all come together yet. So the idea is to have a new set of contracts for nine months, and then the hope is that thereafter, they might go to an 18-month contract, which would enable them to align these contracts with the, with the county's biennial budget period.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted. Item 17, consideration of ordinance for first reading and referral to committee. Item 0049.
Ordinance number 2011 0049, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to establish an economic development fund for the purpose of investing in job growth and economic development in Cuyahoga County, and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective.
All right, this is referred to Economic Development, and this is probably your biggest task thus far, Mr. Schron.
It's a big, big challenge, and I compliment the county executive for, for bringing forward this very creative and very forthright and visionary program. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I look forward to working with him as we put, bring this legislation forward.
All right, item 0050.
Ordinance number 2011 0050, an ordinance providing for the adoption of various changes to the Cuyahoga County Non-Bargaining Classification Plan, and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective.
That goes to Human Resources?
An ordinance number 2011 0051, an ordinance establishing the Department of Communications, and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective.
And that also goes to Human Resources. All right, under Ms. Lee's committee reports, I would like to thank Mr. Fitzgerald for appointing me to the MMPI Task Force. I look forward to working with the other members of the committee. My name was obviously inadvertently left from the Plain Dealer articles, and I just wanted to make sure that the public and council, and the public and the members of council knew that, that council would have a voice in this committee. I also want to report that I am also a member of the Debt Collection Task Force, and we've been working quite diligently. And I actually spent a great deal of time this morning working with Mr. Steen and talking to the clerk, and there's about $20 million we have outstanding in the clerk's office. So we're going to be working aggressively to attempt to collect some of those funds and put in some means into, to, to collect some of those funds. And we actually already started talking to Attorney General's office, so we're going to, we're going to really work aggressively on that. All right, anyone else?
I'll keep looking for other things to point you to.
Don't.
I know. I want you to be gainfully employed. Did you, did, do you have a date, by the way, speaking of MMPI? Do you have a, I know we had talked about having them come and make a presentation.
Oh, yes, I, thank you, thank you.
I should have mentioned it in my executive comments.
Yeah, you know what, thank you. I have it here, and I, and I neglected to mention it. We have been getting the reports from Mr. Applebaum, who's really been kind of talking about the bricks and mortars of the project. And the next work session where we have a presentation on the Med Mart, and I have to say, I'm not sure of the date. Do we have?
November 9.
November 9.
Yeah, November 9, the work session, that'll be at 4 o'clock. We will also have more information about the business aspects and the other aspects of, of the project. All right, any other Ms. Lee's committee reports?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Miller?
Madam President, we're going to be moving into really important hearings in, in the budget process as we move into economic development and human services programs. And it'll be on Monday afternoon from 1 to 5, and also on Tuesday next week from 9 to 12 and from 1 to 5. And so it's going to be a really important week. And also next week on, on Wednesday, November 2, we're hoping that the, we're going to be ready to go on the DTEC legislation for the land bank funding system. And so that would be on Wednesday at 1 o'clock for the Special Finance Committee hearing.
All right, to thank Mr. Miller, he's been working quite diligently. And I think we, we're all going to wear like leisure clothes next Tuesday because we're going to be here from like 9 o'clock in the morning until probably 9, no, not that late. But it's going to be a marathon session. We have all-day budget hearings, and then we have our special meeting at 6 o'clock. Anyone else want to be heard, committee report?
Just a question, because they, they, our, our book does not show that afternoon session that you're talking about, Mr. Miller, on Tuesday. Our book only, I believe.
Yes, it's 9:01.
Yeah, but he just said it goes to 5 o'clock.
There's two sessions.
For one, there's two sessions, one from 9:00 AM to noon, and the second from 1 to 5.
It says 9:00 AM and 1:00 PM.
Move down one.
It's a budgetary, yes, it does.
Right, but he's, I thought Tuesday you went all the way to 5.
Oh, it's 9 and 1.
It's 9 and 1.
Oh. Sorry to be the bearer of bad news.
Yeah, bring your, bring your lunch and whatever. Anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Jones?
Public Works Committee meeting will be our regular time of this Thursday at 11:00 AM. We will continue our discussion of our disparity study legislation. We will, we will talk about a series of presenters. Our first will be our law director, Majid McCluff. And we will discuss the establishment of, of task force and, and just raising our IQ in general about the disparity study legislation.
All right, unless we forget, we have the, just to remind everyone, we have the budget hearings on the 31st at, at 1 o'clock. And then on Mon, on Tuesday, the first, we'll be here all day with budget hearings. And then you're saying we have one on the 2nd. And then I would like to remind everyone on November the 1st at 6 o'clock, we have a special meeting that we're devoting to the veterans of Cuyahoga County, and it should be really a very, very interesting meeting. And we're going to recognize the Veteran's Service Commission and other veterans groups that are going to be recognized in Vietnam veterans. So we're looking forward to it, and we're trying to hold that meeting to just about one hour. All right, is anyone signing for a public comment unrelated to the agenda?
Madam Chair, no one has signed in.
All right, is any other business for the good of the order?
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Miller?
I know that Tuesday, November 1st is going to be a really challenging day, so I'm going to pay for the lunch for that day.
Oh, my, oh. Madam Clerk, would you call Morton's Steakhouse? All right, thank you, Mr. Miller. But from Morton's, I only want a baked potato. I don't want any meat. All right, anything further for the good of the order? All right, all those in favor, motion to adjourn indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion stands, the court, court stands adjourned, committee stands adjourned. Can't.